Channel 79, we're good. All right. Good evening, everybody. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals with town of Darien on Wednesday, November 20th, 2019. There are not a lot of people here, so I'm not going to do the normal things like please turn off your cellphone if you wouldn't mind. And you're welcome to stay during deliberations, but you can't add any additional information during that time. Once I close the hearing, it's, or the, yeah, the hearing, we're closed. So let me start with the Pear Tree application number 20, 2019. The application of Neil Howe on behalf of the town of Darien Parks and Rec, having to do with the Pear Tree Beach improvements. And that application has been withdrawn. So we'll wait to see what they come back with, okay? The first application tonight will be calendar number 18, 2019. The application of Jim Rand on behalf of Gail Rand to allow the construction of a pergola. And they're requesting a variance in section 406, 30 feet and low of 50 feet. And this is for property 31 Ox Ridge Lane, Darien, Connecticut. Mr. Rand?
Yes.
You're up.
I'm up.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure that, I guess I got a name here.
Yes, you can put that right on that easel. That's perfect, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jim Rand. It's Mr. William Sesset. I'm representing my wife, Gail, who owns the house and is the applicant. I don't know whether the visual aids are going to help. I think you probably got it all in your materials already. But what we would like to do is to replace a previously existing canvas awning that was on a pipe frame, welded pipe frame, with a pergola. The dimensions of the pergola are exactly the same as the awning. Exactly as wide, exactly as deep, exactly as high. Frankly, we got frustrated with unreliable awning people refusing to come, refusing to make repairs, refusing to take it down. It finally wore out and we took the frame out a short while ago, making some repairs to the external wall of the house. The, I think really that's all I've got to say, except to answer any questions anybody may have.
Okay. Can you tell us the hardships that exist with your property?
Well, we're too close to the, we're too, I refer to this one, I'm sorry, it's so small, but maybe you have.
We do.
We're too close to the property line. But the house was there before the property line was there.
Okay, do you happen to know when the house was built?
1927.
Perfect.
Approximately.
Yes, good enough.
And we bought it in 1979. When, a few years after we bought the house, a woman came to the door by the name of Lucille Smith, and she introduced herself, and she introduced her son, who was going to be or was an architect in Washington DC or something like that. And she gave me, or us, a stack about that high of photographs of the house as it had evolved, at least in the 30s and the 40s. And this, the black and white is the porch that we're talking about. That's 1947 when that photograph was taken. You can see that the patio was there in 1947, although the awning was not. And above it, you'll see a picture of the house last year. The patio is the same dimensions with the exception of a little square piece, which was laid down after 1947, but before 1979. And, you ask me a question?
He asked you about the hardship.
Yeah, the hardship. I mean, in a sense, we don't have a hardship. I mean, except for the fact that we're too, the property line was put too close to the house.
That's a big hardship.
It is, and the house was built prior to the zoning regulations of 1954, Chuck? Was it 1954?
I don't know the exact date it was done, but your house is nonconforming. I mean, because it's a rear lot, right, Woody?
Yeah, and it's a rear lot.
And so it's, we're looking at a rear lot line versus a side yard. Is that, what would a side yard be if the distant, the...
It would be 35 feet.
35 feet.
So part of it would still be in.
Part of it would still be in even if it were a side yard. But it's been there since you've purchased the property. When did the awning go in?
Sometime after 1947 and sometime before 1979, because it was there.
Yeah, when you got it.
When we bought the house.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so you have wetlands there too, I see, right, on your property?
Well, I'm not aware of any wetlands that have been formally staked. There is a pond which was dug with a bulldozer by Mrs. Smith's father. I've got photographs of it being dug out. There is a stream that goes from the property to our northeast. It's property now alongside Fox Run School. And a fellow by the name of Jay Ginter, maybe 30 years ago, developed some of that land. And the, I believe it was the planning and zoning commission's insistence that the stream be placed underground with big concrete pipes, I don't know what you call it.
Like culverts?
So they're culverts, thank you. So they're culverts going from the former Ginter property, under our lawn, into our pond, which then is one of the tributaries to Stony Brook.
I'm just looking at this map that was attached to the staff's comments. Am I reading the map right? That all this, that would be all wetlands here?
Well, the map is roughly prepared from poorly drained geologic swell identifications until we learn more. So if Mr. Rand and his family have not done it, updated soil scientist report, that's just a guesstimate.
It's a, okay, I see, all right.
Clearly with some corridor water that ended up in the pond.
And then you've got a pond there, and what's the regulation there? You can't, you can't, you're only at 100 feet?
50 feet would be the regulated area from the water patio of the pond.
50 feet.
So if you see, we'd have to look at that.
50 feet from the property line or from the house?
From the pond, from the house. From the house.
Oh goodness.
I'm just trying to do a...
Well, it could way away from that.
I'm just trying to find a hardship for you, actually.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, I think you have one, frankly. I mean, the way the house is constructed, where it's located, the fact that the patio was already there, the fact that you've had this on in there since you purchased the property, and this is simply going to replace that, to me, is...
And the house was built prior to zoning regulations, too.
Mr. Rand, have you spoken with your neighbors, the Druggies, on that side of the home?
I have communicated in writing with all of our butters. Mr. Woodside generated a list of who the 100 feet, or whatever the rule is, and I sent letters to all of them. And I believe Mr. Woodside has a copy of proofs of mailing. I have not received any comments from the Druggies. The only comment I have is from Mrs. Wagner, who abuts our property on the other side, and she has no problem.
Okay. And no plans to enclose it? It would be an open air pergola?
No, 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 no. No plan to enclose it.
Yeah, we would generally do our normal stipulations, which include non-enclosure, no building over it. What else would we do, Woody? Those are pretty standard.
Maybe not expand, there's some suggestions.
Yeah, I think we have a suggested stipulation here. That would work.
Okay, fine.
All right, any other questions from the board?
That's a no. Whoops. No? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rand. Have a nice evening.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, this hearing is now clo, does anybody in the audience have anything to say or any comment with regard to this application? And that's a no. Hearing is closed, sir.
Chairman, I would suggest if it's okay, if I'm delivering that particular application...
Now? You want me to do it now?
Now.
Okay.
It's a little bit out of the ordinary, but then we can jump onto the next one, and the other two members are going to join in.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll do that. Okay, so hearings closed, comments from the board?
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I think it's a simple replacement. I think the hardship is the location of the property, you know, being nonconforming, pre-existing zoning. It looks like there's potentially some wetlands up in the area, as well as a pond. That sort of would push the house down anyway. So with the stipulation that's been proposed by the staff, I'm in favor of it as well.
Okay.
Which one, Mr. Woodside?
The stipulation?
Yeah, all of them are one.
Let me go over all of it. It's a one-story pergola shall not be enclosed by any perimeter wall materials of any kind, including warnings, insect screens, lattice, canvas, temporary plastic, et cetera, other than a central, minimal height, open balustrade style. Safety railing as may be required by the building code. It shall remain has an open trellis frame, overhead structure without any solid roofing materials of any kind. The one-story pergola volume shall not be enlarged horizontally or vertically in the future. So that's what I would suggest.
I think that pretty much covers it for me. Everybody else? Good?
Good.
I'll move to approve it with that stipulation.
Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor? There you go. You have everything you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're done here. Thank you very much, Mr. Rand.
Thank you.
Do you want to see me?
I'm out there, some folks are...
He doesn't want to see me.
Vic has got to be brought in.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you are welcome to my seat and the microphone, though I will continue myself.
Why don't you continue on?
All right, that's fine, no worries. Happy to do it. Vic, how you doing?
Hello.
Okay, second hearing tonight is calendar number 19, 2019. Application of Yasek, Yasek.
Yasek.
Yasek. Say your last name for me, please. Thank you very much. We've known each other for only about 20 some odd years, I still can't get it right, and I apologize for that.
That's okay.
But Yasek of PB Architects on behalf of Jean and...
Per.
Per.
Sessi.
Sorry.
Sessi.
To allow the expansion of a reconstruction, south side, one-story former sunroom. Section 406 and low of 29 and 40 feet, in lieu of 40 feet, excuse me, and a couple others as well. I don't need to read the whole application calendar. But Yasek, if you would be so kind to go ahead, we'd also appreciate, well, I don't want to speak for the board, I would also appreciate it if you would concentrate on the minimal adjustment necessary. I believe the board has, and again, I don't speak for the board, but I believe the board has a good understanding of your hardships. But what I'd like to hear is a discussion and an explanation about the minimal adjustment necessary. Please.
Correct. Good evening. My name is Yasek Biyosinski. PB Architects. With me is Jean Sessi and Per Sessi, they're the owners of the house. And so there's no secret that we've been here before, and as you probably know, the previous application that has been approved is under litigation, it's been already two years. And so the Sessi would like to, you know, continue living in the house, which is pretty much was unlivable. And so we are doing currently a renovation under a 50% rule, which basically means that if we renovate under 50% of the structure, of the value of the structure, that we don't have to comply with the FEMA regulations. Because the FEMA regulations would basically tell us to lift the house out of the ground and get it above the flat plane. So we're getting around, you know, that regulation by doing the renovation under 50%. And that basically means only the inside work, only inside renovation, and doing also kitchen, which is part of the plan. So as you know, the hardship, if you look at the buildable area right here, a green little strip of land that's behind the house. So no matter what you do to this house, you'll need to get a variance. What happened here was, we started renovating what used to be a screen porch. You see some photos there showing the state of that structure. It was literally a porch that was added and extended on. It has, or had, two 2x4s spanning 18, over 12 feet, 12 and a half feet. And so as we got closer into renovating it and took the ceiling down and opened it up, the structure itself, we realized that it had to be repaired. And so, you know, with today's coats and the span, we needed bigger joists and so on. And it really made sense to align the floor of the, call it the kitchen now, what used to be the sunroom, with the second floor of the existing house, and basically making the ceilings aligned. We do have a approval to, you know, eventually add on top of it and add a second floor. So, you know, that to us, it just didn't even occur that by sort of renovating and changing the shape of that roof by lifting it eight inches, that this would really trigger another application, and here we are. So in terms of the, you know, minimum adjustment, we think that there is really, this is the minimum that we could have done and we should have done under the circumstances. We have not changed any of the setbacks, so the numbers that you see in the notice, those are the numbers that were there. If you look at the picture of the screen porch, of this porch, this is right before the renovation. The proposed will look the same with the exception of windows. There is a different arrangement of windows. Here you have French doors. Here you have basically casement windows with some transom. The balusters on top of this flat roof will go back just exactly the same way. The brickwork that you actually see from the existing structure, that will stay. So everything that we're going to do will look exactly the same, and it will be only eight inches higher.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If you get your variance that's on appeal, approved on appeal...
Yep.
What's your plan then? Because then you're going to have to come back for a third variance, because this structure's going to be eight inches higher.
No, we would, no, because what we have already approved, which is under litigation, is actually adding on top of that, putting a master bedroom right on top of the structure.
Right, but that first floor structure, I looked at the previous file, is at the existing height. So you're now going to go eight inches, you're going to go a second story above that, which is also going to be eight inches higher.
No, no, we actually, what is right now constructed, in a sense, is actually ready for the second floor addition, because that, those floors align. The plan was, or still is, from the second floor, right now, oh, okay, right before the renovation here, there's a French door here, you can see, right? There was a step down onto the roof of this structure here, right? The new proposed bedroom, which would be right on top of this, you just walk out right into it. So rather than stepping down eight inches, you would just walk right into the master bedroom.
Right, but we approved...
That's what you approved.
In your other application, we approved you lifting the current structure.
Right.
So you would have still had that step down, which no longer exists. So you're going to be eight inches higher at the top one.
Well, no, because the, what was approved had actually floors lined up. We were lifting the structure, but then we were adding on top of that. So the master bedroom that was proposed to be on top of the kitchen, or what used to be the sunroom, goes right on top of it and was actually aligned. There was no step down from the master bedroom. You know, it wouldn't make much sense to step down from the master bedroom down into the bedroom. You know, you'd be, you end up tripping, and it's just eight inches. One step is very dangerous. So we always had the intention to align the floors.
So your representation is that what you've built matches up with what was previously approved?
That's correct. Well, with the exception of no structure on top of it. Right? So we're not building anything else. What we're going to do at this point is only complete the interior renovation. Put the kitchen, you know, kitchen cabinets are actually in storage, because we got stopped, and we cannot continue with that part of the project. So all we really wanted to do was just finish this up and then just wait until the litigation is over. And, you know, once we get a resolution, then we would know what to do next. But at least, this would allow us to continue this project and finish it up. So by the way, you know, and then, you know, there was a question raised about the volume, you know, and the increase of volume. The increase of volume is less than 1%. If you just took this space into consideration, okay, a 12'6' by 17', what it was before we lifted it, it was at 7'4", now the ceiling is at 8'. That's an increase of less than 1% in terms of volume. And when you look at the structure, first of all, this particular part of the house, as you can see in this picture here, if you come down Beach Drive, you don't see it. You have to be on the cul-de-sac to actually see it. And you have to stand, actually go beyond the front door, and then turn towards the house to look at it. And again, the way it's going to look is pretty much the way it was, with the exception of extra eight inches. So it's not blocking anybody's view. Certainly the neighbors right adjacent, the Daleks, I don't think they're going to see any kind of a difference in terms of view, in terms of volume. You know, it's really no different than what it was before.
Yeah, there's no neighbors around at all. I mean, it's at the end.
Well, at that end, yes. But there's a neighbor sort of across, but again, the way the house is positioned, they're not even looking over that structure. And we do have, you know, several letters from the neighbors that, you know, when we send the notices out, we're going to submit those for the record. They're in favor. We don't know of anybody opposed, except for the neighbors, but I'm sure they're going to say something about that.
What happens if our decision is reversed by the court? I'm just unclear as to what would be the next step for you?
This decision?
At that point?
For this particular application?
No, the decision that's currently pending before the court, if that, if our decision is reversed...
Right.
And apparently then the court says, well, there's not enough hardship or not enough evidence of minimum adjustment to justify the variance that we had previously granted to you, you've got to go back to square one at that point, it seems to me. But then we have a building that's like half-built based upon a variance that may or may not survive. I mean, am I getting that right?
Yes, well, so we actually thought about that, of course. And so what will happen is, we will just stop. The house would be completed, provided that we can finish the kitchen, right? Which is what we're talking about right now. We're not going to add over the kitchen, we're not going to add over the garage, and we're not going to lift the house to get it out of the flat plane. Which really is really just, I mean, that to me is just unconscious, that somebody would actually object that. That, you know, you would make my clients live in a house that is going to flop, because the neighbors object that. Because they don't like it.
I'm sorry, I don't follow you.
Well, it's, right now, the house, the first floor of this house is within the flat plane.
Yeah.
Which means that it's going to flop with a major storm. Right? We cannot lift the house, because that's part of the litigation. So we're renovating the house right now. We're putting in a new kitchen, new floors, you know, trying to make it livable so they can actually move back. They've been actually out of the house. They don't live there anymore. And trying to make it livable, and when we finish this, hopefully there'll be no storm until we get some kind of a resolution. And if we get shut down, we would have to come back to get a variance to lift the house. I just don't understand why, but that's, those are the regulations.
Tell us about the parking issues. We just got a staff report this evening when we came in, indicating that there seems to be quite a bit of parking by the contractors and the tradespeople, perhaps where it shouldn't be. Do you want to address that?
Yeah, well, I'm aware of that. I know there were some instances that, you know, most of the time, everybody parks, they actually park at the property, they do not park on the cul-de-sac, and they make really a big effort. But, you know, from time to time, there will be some contractor coming in, and they just park like, you know, wherever. And so...
But I mean, isn't there somebody in charge of the job that will say...
There is a, there is a, yes.
We have a stipulation by the zoning board that says you can't park there, so park someplace else. I mean, isn't there somebody there who can enforce the stipulation that we imposed?
We're really trying to do that, and we, you know, there is a contractor, a GC, that is on the job, but sometimes he has to run to, you know, get something. And at this point in time, right now, I think, last time I was at the job, there were like six trucks in there. And, you know, on that little tiny piece of land, it's very difficult to find a parking spot. So they were all over the place. I mean, meaning as parked as tight as possible, with the back of the car right at the curb. And so, you know, we couldn't get anymore. And again, that's what happens. Sometimes you get a delivery, or you get something, and the cars have to be moved around and so on. But, you know, we understand. I think most of the time, anytime somebody says something, they will move the car right away. And, you know, I'm not there all the time, the Sessis are not there all the time, they don't live there anymore. So, you know, we're trying to do the best that we can and police that, but from time to time, something happens, yes. We admit that.
There's...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
There's an engineering report from your previous application, which envisioned this exact type of work. So I'm a little confused as to why it's a surprise to you that you had to do this work.
Well, our plan was to, in the report, we measured the height and the depth of the joists, and we figured they're about eight inches thick. So we were going to sister these up with another additional joist. When we opened up the structure, what we found were two layers. And you can see that here, there were two layers of 2x4s, and the second layer was actually slanted. And so that was a surprise. Without opening the ceiling, we didn't know that. You just make, you know, I think reasonable assumption that by measuring from the bottom and to the top, that that would be the thickness of the joists.
So when this plan was done, the ceiling wasn't opened?
No. Not the first one. And even the print, I mean, even the building permit set for the interior renovation, what we have, the permit currently under construction, we made the assumption that the ceiling can be just sistered up and put back together. What we didn't know, and you can also see that in these photographs here, there was a water damage. You know, all of this flushing here didn't work a long time ago. Water was getting into the joists. Here is a piece of one of those 2x4s. I mean, look at this. This is all eaten and rotten. So it had to come out. We couldn't just use that to, you know... And again, it's very difficult to foresee this without really ripping the house apart. When we started to work, when I got hired, two and a half years ago, you know, the Sessis were living in the house, and it was a little bit chilly, and there was no heat in some parts of it, but, you know, they were there. We measured things, we checked things out. Now we took it apart, and we found that we needed to beef up the structure.
I guess, Woody, in the future, when we get these structural engineering reports that are supposed to help us understand what, you know, what they're actually going to be doing to the project, we need to have them, you know, open up walls. doing to the project, we need to have them, you know, open up walls. Because, I mean, basically, they envision the exact project that they're doing, but now it's eight inches taller.
Did you state?
This is, sorry, for the record, this is David E. Seymour.
What's his date then? David Seymour?
Report from September 15th, 2017. And on the first floor of sunroom, it says, the first floor, the sunroom's first floor is slab on grade. The new floor will be installed using 9 1/4 TJI at least 16 inches on center. I think that's the exact framing that you're using, right?
Yes.
And the existing ceiling is framed with 2x8 floor joists which cannot carry the load. The new floor loads on these joists will be sistered with 9 1/4 inch LVLs, mostly exterior walls and windows. Additional 2x4 studs will need to be installed along with new windows. So, I don't understand how that, I mean, you had this report, you knew you were gonna have to put in new framing. How did we end up eight inches higher than we expected today?
Well, our intention was to...
If we were trying, if we were actually trying to rebuild, you know, what was there and stay in that 50% rule, how did we end up eight inches higher?
Because when, by the time we took everything down, it really made sense to align the floors. I mean, that's the contractor's thinking, and, you know, I agreed with that without thinking that, you know, this would recover a variance, because I actually thought we were covered, because we already have a approval to do an addition on top of this floor that was just reconstructed. So, in terms of the volume and the setbacks, there isn't really no change. You know, where that floor went inside, didn't really change anything on the outside. So, I thought that we were covered with the previous application.
I mean, Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're entitled to proceed even though it's under appeal?
Oh, no, no, they can, no question about it. It's just, I think, a risky move, but they certainly have that right.
So, I mean, if you want to proceed and keep the construction that's there under your existing variance with the risk that it may get overturned, you know, we don't really even need to continue the hearing tonight.
Yasek, can... Yes, you can, sure.
This is Perisakso, one of the homeowners. So, I appreciate sort of what you're stating. So, our perspective on this is, we're just asking you for this one variance such that should the appeal prevail on the court case. And we don't know how this will come down. The judge may actually go through and cherry pick it. We don't know what the outcome will be. So, you are correct. We can continue working in the house under that and take the risk of whatever he decides against us, we may have to undo, or come back to you and file for a new approval. We understand that part of the first application. Here, we went and pulled in a completely independent building permit, and we really thought we would not need any variances, right? We're in the existing footprint, we're not creating new living space, we're just making the house conform with building code. That's really the whole objective here. And so, the reason we're asking you to consider this variance tonight is, by granting us the variance for that change in the structure of the roof, it's now complying with all building code. It's to the right code, and it does align our floors and it positions us, if we do win on the other case and it prevails, to just build on top of it. If we lose, what we're looking for is the variance to be in place so that we can just complete the interior renovations, get a C O., and move back into our house. So...
Yeah, but you're almost asking us to sort of prejudge this then, right? You're asking us to step before the judge makes his ruling to make a ruling a sort of preemptive.
Then he just gave the two options, without or with, right?
Yeah, but if you're truly doing this under the 50% renovation, then we can't grant you a variance.
You can't grant us a variance.
Right, because you're not replacing what's there. You're putting in a new structure. It's eight inches taller than the existing structure.
That's why we need a variance.
That's why we need the variance.
But then you're not under the 50% rule because we're granting a variance for something new. You're not just replacing what's there.
No, no, the way the 50% rule works is that as long as you renovate, if you are within a flat plane, like, you know, A814, whatever is the zone, and you have to be a certain height above the flat plane, right? And you have a house that's non-conforming, meaning the first floor is lower than the required flat plane, okay? You can actually renovate that house if you're not doing more than 50% of the value of the structure work. So, if the structure is, you know, is $500,000, the value of the structure, and I do work under $250,000 construction, I can do whatever I need to do inside, okay? I don't need to lift the house.
Inside?
Inside.
But we're creating new space outside.
There is no new space. The floor plan and the footprint of that porch is the same. It's really just the ceiling that we're talking about. And we do need a variance for that because that part of the structure, the house, is non-conforming. So, that's why we need a variance for that.
Yasek, I think the question here is, can you include in that 50% calculation, right? So, the investment in this project, the building permit, needs to be below 50%, otherwise we have to lift the house, right?
Of the assessed value. So, what is the assessed value on the property?
It's about, it's a little less than $800,000.
Okay, so then you could do $400,000 worth of work. And that's always been that.
Yeah, and that includes putting these new beams in.
We're already, our permit is actually below that number.
How far below?
We're at $270,000.
$70,000, yeah. So, we have room to make adjustments for some of such work.
No, I'm not sure it is, because it's, the rules specifically say renovation. So, you can renovate a structure that's there.
Yeah.
But this is, they're going higher. It's as if they're creating a new structure. I mean, it's only eight inches. I get that it's a small amount, but it's...
You're saying the eight inches times 12 times 17 is what's the new structure?
And that new piece changes this entire thing.
In my...
But are they forced to do the eight inches because of the flood plain? No.
No.
No, they're not lifting it.
It's just...
And I'm a...
I'm not convinced by the building code. I think, Woody, you provided us something with the ceiling heights being 7'4".
That's true. The applicable building code is only 7 feet for habitable space.
Can you get him, Judy?
No, he doesn't, he doesn't...
Here.
He's back there.
All right, I'm moving over.
I think we provided in your staff stuff that's like a building code and it does talk about 7, not 8 or whatever this is. 7'4" apparently meets the current building code.
It's ridiculous.
So, sir, your comment about meeting building code, what exactly was that referencing?
Well, my understanding was, because we're preparing this kitchen to be, you know, ready to carry the weight on top of it, so we needed to make sure that it could carry another floor on top of it. So, that was part of the whole sistering and rebuilding it. Second, if we don't get that approval, now, the ceiling on top is not an interior floor, right? It's exterior. So, we have to meet the insulation requirements and everything else. And so, by putting in the beam, we get enough space to blow in the insulation to meet the right R value. That was my understanding.
So, yeah, so what happens is, this is, and this is, again, this is tricky. If that kitchen is open to the elements, the ceiling of it, in other words, it's just a, there's no space above it, that is actually a ceiling. In that case, it has to have a R value of R49. That's very, very high. We need thickness for it. We need a lot of thickness. And so, if that floor, if we were doing this under the previous renovation or approval, the variance, the previous application, there wouldn't be any insulation there. This is crazy, because the way this thing's just worked out. So, we wouldn't even put any insulation in there. Well, we could have done what we were doing and built another thicker floor, but there was no insulation inside and be done with it, right? Now, because we have to finish this construction with the permit that we have, we are showing insulation R49 in there. And the ceiling height, yeah, it could have been lower, but since we had to take it down and we couldn't sister these joists anymore, again, it just really made sense to align these floors. You know, the ceiling, it's not, it's not, it's not anything crazy. I mean, I thought just 8 foot, 8 foot high ceiling, the rest of the house is 8 feet. We're not asking for 10 or 9, 8 feet. The old ceiling was 7'4". We gained 6 inches, I mean, 8 inches inside. And the structure was falling apart, we had to rebuild, because the building code would not allow us to put it back together the way it was. You know, especially if this is outside, external ceiling, exposed to the elements. So, with the two layers of 2x4s and some even, you know, very good insulation in there, we just couldn't make it.
Yasek, so, just for clarification, my understanding is, you could have rebuilt the exact structure with the 7'4" ceilings, but it didn't make sense. So, you raised it to match the floor.
Yes.
That's the bottom line on this.
That's correct.
And that's the issue that changes the whole application for us, that had you rebuilt it to 7'4", this wouldn't be an issue.
Right. Yes, I mean, listen, I mean, sure...
I hear you. It makes sense. I get it.
Because again, when the contractor called me from the job and said, listen, you know, this thing is falling apart, can you come over and take a look? I went there, I saw what was going on. I said, no, we have to take it all out. We gotta put new joists in there, okay? Where do you want me to put it? Well, just align it with the floors, because eventually, we're gonna have a bedroom there, and you'll be walking from one part of the room into the second, and why have a little step? You know, one step here? You know how many times you've tripped on this?
Yeah.
I did myself.
It's a big problem.
It's very dangerous. So, I salute you, just line it up, because we have a variance to put a structure on top of it. So, I thought we were all covered. And I'm sorry, this is my mistake. I should have probably stopped and said, okay, well, let's just put it back together to 7'4". And if, you know, if that's the case, we'll take it down. We'll rebuild it. We'll put it at 7'4". And we don't have to talk about it.
I think, just to make a point clear here, I don't think your options are tear it down and put it to 7'4" or get a variance for what it is. I mean, you've got a variance for what it is. What you've told me, you've built it to the specifications of the variance that you have.
Yeah.
So, you don't even need to be here tonight. So, you know, asking us to grant a variance on top of that, you're saying, okay, we need you to find that this is the minimum adjustment necessary to grant an additional variance to a variance that you've already granted, because we may or may not get that variance upheld.
Right.
And that puts this board in a very precarious position where, we've seen it in the past, where we've granted a variance, and then the family comes back and says, well, we need three bedrooms instead of two, so we want to raise these walls, we want to raise these... And it's very hard to find the minimum adjustment necessary for a different variance when we've already granted one.
Right.
So, it puts us in a really tough position. And yes, there's a hardship on the lot, I don't think anyone would debate that. But what you've built, we've already granted a variance for. So, you know, I would keep it, I'd get your C O., I'd live in the house. And if you get a denial, come back and see us and deal with it at that point.
Right. Well, I think that absolutely makes sense, and I understand where you're coming from, because, like you said, it's kind of like, we wanted to keep going. We didn't want to be, when we got stopped, I mean, this is exactly what happened. We were under construction, we thought we were doing the right thing, and we get a call from the town saying, hey, stop. You're doing, you know, we have to stop. So, we did. So, that part of the house, we're working on it, but that part of the house, we haven't touched since then. Nothing. So, now we can say, look, we're just gonna keep going because we don't really need a variance for it, and we're going to get the C O., and maybe, hopefully, a ruling is going to be done before we finish this.
So, can I, I just want to be clear, this is Perisakso again for the record. So, if I understand you correctly, we're too early, basically.
I really think you are. I think you gotta wait for the judge to decide what he's gonna decide.
Depending on that outcome, we would come back to you, basically make the same presentation, but now you don't have the conflict.
Correct.
And you can find, we obviously have a hardship, and this is not a, we're not trying to build an extra bedroom or anything. We're just trying to...
No, no, I totally understand the application. I understand why you brought it, but it just puts us in an awkward position.
We want to work with the board, trust me.
If we're preapproving things before they actually come to fruition, then it, you know, Chuck, you see this in litigation all the time, right? A judge won't preapprove something. You gotta actually have the material matter of fact in front of you, and we just don't know what the judge is gonna decide. So, I think it's, you know, time better spent. I mean, we could grant this variance, and I know Mr. Maslin's sitting back there, and we could be on another appeal on this variance again, so...
Yeah, we're not trying to waste anybody's time.
I think you're just creating more work for yourself.
So, should we defer or withdraw this?
I would, I would, I'm not the judge, I would continue.
Well, I would continue as well. The only problem is, we don't know when the judge is gonna make his decision, but...
It's 120 days from when they filed, so the clock's ticking. So, we'll be within that 120 days unless he...
And we can keep them on the calendar and they can grant us further continuance.
Vic, you seem to look like you want to say something.
I do. If the judge approves the variance as we granted it, the plans that they submitted...
Yeah, yes.
They need to come back again?
No, they just go second story.
But the plans that they submitted have the ceiling height of 7'4".
No, they don't. I actually double-checked them.
Oh, you did look at that?
Yeah, the reason I was confused by that is the plans that they submitted before show the foundation being raised. So, Yasek has assured me that when they raise the foundation on all of the floors, all the floors are gonna go up together and they're all gonna be level.
So, the plans that they submitted do not have a 7'4"? Okay.
They had, they had, they had all the floors even.
The way the thing was, the kitchen had an 8-foot ceiling. It's always had that.
Sure. So, just to follow up on what he was getting at initially.
Sure.
When you do do the second story, that bedroom is not gonna be eight inches taller on the roof line?
No, 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 it just...
It's gonna be...
Right. Everything goes up, same...
Everything goes up together.
Yes, you're just, you're just eliminating a step.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, they had all the floor levels. I did double-check, they had all the floor levels lined up.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
We're gonna continue this.
Yeah, I think you should.
Yeah. And I certainly, my wife and I, we certainly understand that. We did not intend to create problems. We thought we had a separate permit.
Mr. Dillibor.
When does 120 days run?
Okay.
Do you know when it runs?
When's it expire?
I should know that date. Somewhere at the beginning of October.
Is the last event, 120 days from there?
Things were submitted to the judge. You know, the judge can do different things, but I understand the clock is ticking.
So, the start date was the end of October, obviously.
No, earlier in October.
So, sometimes it...
Like, maybe mid-October, so...
Woody, we can continue this indefinitely though, so long as the outcome unsets, right?
Yeah, at least 35 days to next month.
So, right, so you understand, it appears as though I'm gonna continue this, but you also understand that if we, the zoning board of appeals, runs out of, it's a lot of time, if you will.
And we have to...
We can ask you for a continuation, and you need to approve that.
Yes.
Okay? I just want to make that clear.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask one other question? Can I ask one other question, Woody?
Yes.
Has there, has a stop order, a stop work order been issued?
That's actually what I was gonna say. I think we would need the zoning enforcement officer to clarify the exact status of what happened and what was determined that would, that could proceed and what couldn't. And I'm sorry, I don't have all that information.
So, we, we obviously talked with zoning enforcement officer at building. We were clearly told we could pull two permits. So that's actually, we have, we have the original one that we're before you on, and, I don't know, about a month ago, whatever, we pulled the other permit that's under, that has all of the zoning variance is approved, but is subject to the court case. So we understand that as long as that's pending, we can continue working, and zoning enforcement, building, you know, the building permit, it's all valid, the permit's valid. And so we're building under that at this moment, and so any work in the kitchen is done under that permit. We, we understand that. And should the court case come out against us, then we also understand that that permit is invalid, we have to stop all work, and we have to reapply for whatever approvals we, we require to continue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I can offer this much clarification. The increased height of this kitchen and the proposed roof overhang with the railing, that is not approved with current permits. Because the overall plan is to lift that whole end of the house and then put the railing up above the second floor. So what the subject of this actual application is, would not be approved unless they get it approved tonight or some other night as an additional variance, keeping it down low, but with the overhang and the railing. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, no, we, we understand, so...
So they'd have to leave it in the, in the current box shape until this is...
So another, can I rephrase my understanding? Peresak say again. So my understanding is, we're currently moving forward on the building permit we pulled with all the variance approvals that you granted us, that's under appeal. That includes the height of the kitchen, it actually includes building on top of it. We have no intention of building anything extra volume-wise until we hear the court case, because that doesn't make any sense. And we're going to lift the house last. So there was some discussion of, do we have to lift the house first before we do work? And, you know, the, the town is not telling us what's the logical order to do this total project. And so we're proceeding on that basis. So everything we're doing is covered by the permit, by the variances you've already granted, until we hear from the judge on what we're allowed to do and what we're not. And we fully understand that at that juncture, the town would have to come back and say, "If you lose the case," or whatever piece of it, that part of the project would be stopped, or we might have to come back and file for a new approval.
Yeah. Okay. Pardon me. Mr. Netter is, is exactly correct, so I, I am gonna move to continue this unless there are other comments from the board, or questions.
I think we've got, we've got a bunch of people in the audience who...
Well, if I continue it, I don't have to, do I, I don't have to do that?
I think people don't have to, but people spend the time with...
So you want me to do that? Okay. I will wait to make that motion until I hear from other members of the audience that have something to add to the application. So I will ask the audience, does anyone out there have any comments relative to this application?
I do have two letters from my other two neighbors basically supporting our application that I can submit.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Maslin. For the record, I represent Maria Sullivan and Bruce Gulick, who live next door at number forty each drive. In, in view of the fact that this looks like it's gonna be continued, I'll just make a couple of comments.
Please.
And, and most of it's clarification of the status of things since the last variances was granted. A building permit was issued for interior renovations early this year. One of the things that happened was this sunroom was dismantled in significant way, and the contractor started to rebuild it, and that included some floor work, replacing either wall or parts of the floor. The roof and ceiling are higher. Dave Keating wrote a letter fairly recently, this is, said, "You can't use the variance that was granted in pieces. You have to do the whole thing. You can't do the sunroom under that variance unless you're actually gonna lift the house." So apparently, in response, the contractor, acting on behalf of the owner, obtained a building permit, zoning and building permit, to lift the house and to build what the variance allows. So if the plan now is to proceed with work under that variance, the house has to be lifted. My concern at this point is, they've already done some work on this, what happens when they do other things, like they've already put dormers up on the top level? What if the judge says, "You can lift the house, but you can't do any expansion," which would be consistent with a recent case, the Whitman case that just came out, you may have heard about it? What's gonna happen? You're gonna have part of the work that was approved by the variance done, but we don't know if that part that's done is actually going to be upheld by the court. The judge has three options here: uphold it in its entirety, dismiss the appeal, or sustain the appeal in its entirety, or something in between. And not to get into the briefing or the questions the judge raises, but it appears that the judge is interested in, what's this variance? What's the justification for it? What's that variance? What's the justification? In other words, looking at each individual aspect of the project...
That's true.
Looking at, okay, what's the justification? Which indicates to me that the judge could be, and I'm speculating, but I've been in front of this judge enough times to know this, he may say, "You can do this, but you can't do that." One of the things in the recent Whitman case that came out is the Supreme Court said certain aspects of non-conforming structures are grandfathered, but non-compliance with flood elevations is not. And if you're gonna replace a floor, I would, different context, because they're building a new building, but you can't replace a non-conforming floor with another non-conforming floor. And I think that's what's going on here as well. And I, I think I heard that this floor is being raised so you don't have to step down into it. Now you're at a different elevation, but you're still not in compliance with the flood elevation. There's no request for flood variance here. And I, I remember plenty of projects where people have put additions on and have asked for variances so that their new floor can match up with the previous non-conforming floor elevation under the flood rates. So there's, there's more to this than just simply saying, "Go under the existing variance and hope someday you get approved by the court or upheld by the court and lift the whole house." Because that, that really is leaving too much up in the air. What happens if this house is significantly changed by the time the decision comes out, and what's built is not consistent with the judge's decision? Now what do you do? If you go forward with this application and you grant this narrow, just-for-the-sunroom-type request, then what do you do? What if, what happens? What happens when you get the decision that says you can't enlarge the house? Well, now we got another variances that says you can't.
All right.
Do we have to appeal this?
Go ahead, please.
Do we have to appeal this? And then finally, if I can just make one more point, Mr. Chairman. The reason we're here is the work was done beyond the scope of the existing zoning and building permits. And that's what's really going on here. This work was done, the, there was substantial dismantling of this sunroom and reconstruction of it. Dave Keating went out and figured out that the ceiling and roof structure was higher than what was there before, stopped the job, and this variance application followed. There are provisions in your regulations in section eleven-twenty-five that allow you to decline to consider an application when there's an existing nonconformity that was done, and I'll read it to you. The zoning board of appeals...
So there's two things here. So we, we, we're gonna continue this hearing.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We're gonna continue this hearing, and the, the applicant knows that they proceeded their own, at their own detriment.
Sure.
And I've never seen anywhere in the building code where the zoning enforcement officer gets to decide how you phase your project.
That's true.
So they can lift it at the end, they can lift it at the beginning, they can lift it in the middle. That's, that's their decision.
Exactly.
So, you know, I, I, those, those arguments don't carry a lot of weight, and, you know, if they wanna proceed with this on the basis that they're proceeding, they're, they're more than entitled to it.
Then deny the variance is unnecessary, and...
We're gonna continue it.
Okay, okay.
When's a hundred and twenty days run?
I don't know, because what happened here was, we had the trial start, and you know how zoning trials go. You put on evidence of aggrievement, and you go to oral argument. With Judge Tobin, if you've been in front of him, sometimes you do the argument first. We didn't get too far into the argument, but he did accept evidence of aggrievement and found aggrievement, but then sent the case back to the board twice. And we don't know if he's going to call us in to resume the oral argument based on the updated return of record or the updated decision with the...
So it may not even have started yet.
May not have even started.
Have you guys done briefs on this?
We did briefs to get to trial.
Uh, but no...
We both filed motions for leave to file briefs in light of this recent Supreme Court case. We haven't had a decision on it yet. My understanding, I think, and I don't wanna get this wrong, but I'll risk it, I think Judge Tobin is beyond, I think he's on senior status, and so he's not, he's not there every day.
Okay.
He's, he's limited in number of days that he's, he could work, so...
All right.
There, I mean, there you are.
There we are.
No, so continuing is probably a good idea.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't wanna make, but it's very reactionary, so I'm not gonna make it.
Okay.
You can, you have thirty-five days to close the hearing, you can extend that another seventy or was it sixty-five, I guess?
Yeah, I believe the applicant swore that, so...
So sixty-five to sixty-five.
You can go out another ninety, ninety days from today.
Okay. Okay. All right, he doesn't wanna comment, okay. We're good. Is it, I'm, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make comments?
I, I haven't made all my comments, but...
It's okay, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
No, I got it.
And a lot of it's speculation, so...
And I, I think it's a good conservative...
So we need to find out what Judge Tobin's gonna do, and once we find out what he's gonna do, then we don't need to speculate any further.
Okay, thank you.
Again, is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to make comments to this application?
I don't necessarily have to make comments, but I do have a letter I can add to your file, I need full support.
Or if you could just give your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Fred Elliott. I live at one-oh-two Rings End Road in Darien. As the letter states, I, I row on Holly Pond. I know all about this house. I applaud the sexes for continuing their efforts to improve upon their property in spite of the obstacles that they've run into. So I hope we can get this thing taken care of immediately and let them proceed, which apparently is where we're going, is where we're headed right now.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. And anyone else in the audience like to make comments to this application? I'll take that as a no. Without any other, without any further comment from the board or the audience, this hearing is continued until, we continue until next meeting of December the eighteenth, I believe, Woody?
Correct.
Okay? So continued until December the eighteenth. We await Judge Tobin's response. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Extra copy.
All right.
Other business?
So that's continued. Yep. Let's see, where are we? Where are we? Opening, let's go to business.
Make a reservation, go to business.
What do we got, Woody? What do we got? Let's see, approval of minutes on October the sixteenth. I was not here, so, everybody okay with the approval of the, excuse me, everybody okay with the minutes of October the sixteenth, two thousand nineteen? Yes?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you very much.
I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, yes.
Okay, you'll second. Okay, that's approved?
Seconded, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
That wasn't...
All in favor.
Okay. Then we have a requested six-month extension on the Gallagher residence at two forty-one Narroton Avenue. Woody, is this their first extension?
Interestingly enough, for this application, yes. There actually was a prior application that expired, they ran out of time, and they had to reapply.
Let's talk about this one for a second.
Please.
Yeah, I normally I don't, you know, I'm in favor of extensions, and, but, but this one here is a little different. This is not, if I, if I remember the house on the road, this is the one that was abandoned, foreclosed, and now recently just had a huge, big wire fence just was put around it today or yesterday. And nothing's really happened until, until then, and now we're being asked for a six, a six-month extension, because why? I mean...
I think I saw something about a wedding.
A wedding?
Did I see that?
I mean, is that really a legitimate...
Was it, was it planned to start a number or something?
Yeah. You know, it's, this is not a case where somebody wants to put an addition on their home, and the home is habitable. This is almost a blight, and nothing happened for six months because of a wedding, and now, you know, we're looking at another six months. And, you know, I just, I just think that it's something to be considered. I'm not saying deny this. I'm saying maybe we keep it on a shorter leash...
Three to two months.
And, and, and watch it, and maybe give them a two-month, sixty days, and see where they are, and they come back again, et cetera. Because I just don't think we should let a situation like that, an uninhabited house that's falling apart, continue on for another six months without a little bit more oversight.
I agree with Mr. DeLuca a hundred percent, and to that end, other comments from the board?
Love it, agree.
Okay, I'm gonna move this to two months. Woody, two-month extension.
Somebody...
So somebody, all in favor?
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor?
Who's voting, all seven of us?
I don't know exactly, to be honest.
Might as well, yeah.
You can all vote on that.
Yeah, so, two months.
Two months, fine.
Plug it.
Motion made, second. All in favor, five, five-zero, seven-zero, whatever. Okay, two months on that one. Requested amendment to the approved plans calendar, Douglas and Rick Monroe, one-oh-two Rings End Road. Okay, what, Woody, tell me what this is about, please.
Some of you are more familiar with this because you were involved with this project's original...
Is this the, is this, that, this is the house down at the end of the thing, that we had, we had to meet downstairs because there were so many people and all this stuff?
Yes, the right event.
Yeah, and I, I know Becky Monroe, yeah, of course it's it. Okay.